Good morning, welcome Commissioners Courts. Uh, regular session October twentieth. We have a full quorum present, Katie certified, the new one's probably posted. So please rise for prayer and pledges.
James Ryan. Uh, regular session.
That's a little feedback.
We got a good one.
Pretty clear.
How do you undo it?
Hear what you said.
United States of America. On innovation. They're gonna have the end of this.
Honor.
There's this thing.
What's your state? God. And in this all.
Try that now. I'm back to what?
Yeah.
All right. I didn't receive any system input. Consent agenda contains twelve items.
Four eleven, please.
Try that now?
Someone's not me.
Back to what?
Yeah.
All right. I didn't receive any system input. Consent agenda contains four items. Well, we just put on mute.
Someone's not me. Right here.
Back to what?
Sorry, that also could be heard.
Okay.
You can use the music for you.
I don't even wanna talk anymore.
Yeah.
That's all it took.
It's shutting me up.
Well, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the consent agenda removing number eleven.
Look. Moving second on favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries number eleven approved facility request twenty twenty-six dash oh six. Thank Daniel. Something Mario sports bar to use the annex parking lot.
I kinda have an issue with this. I mean, they're gonna use it regardless. You know, I mean. People park there all the time after the offices close up. I don't really have an issue with that, but I'll start approving sports bars to. Approve, I mean, let this court approve a bar. Well, you know, to me, bars is drinking and problems go along with drinking, in my opinion, but. I'm, I'm gonna say that we just ought to pull it and just leave it alone. Or deny it, but.
You got.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't mean, I don't have any problem with it. I just.
I don't either.
Get into the habit of proving everybody to use the parking lot, you know, same. Same thing goes with, I, I'm sure City Hall overflow parking into it on the weekends and during the evening, so. I mean, that's, that's y'all, Rhett.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Uh, hold on. If you'll stand up here and state your name for this.
My name is Daniel Salat. Uh, one of my business partners here, Kyle Jones.
It's Kyle Jones.
I'm one of the, uh, I'm going to be one of the sponsors of it. So I own the art gallery over there, March Art and Advocacy Projects. And I'm gonna be one of the sponsors there. And we're gonna have sheriffs there. We're gonna have a lot of security, then four sheriffs and then two outside, uh, security there.
I mean, uh, you know, typically, everybody parks their after hours anyway, but.
And during hours.
And during hours too. Now, during hours is a problem if they. A lot of. As far as approving this, I'd rather not do it this way. That's just my thoughts on it.
Not saying you can't use. Just, just, I don't think we need to get in the habit of approving people to use our parking lot.
Well, I mean. This is for, um, an actual boxing event. It's gonna be sanctioned. There's gonna be security there as well, like Mr. Dale had already mentioned. We will have one of the sheriffs actually attending, uh, that specific parking lot, making sure there's no vandalism, nobody's gonna be illegal or anything that's just disruptive and disorderly to. Uh, for that specific area during that time. Um, I understand you guys' concerns of not wanting to approve it for multiple events or multiple occasions on that nature. Um, but this event is like the one and done for the city and for that area specifically.
Yes.
When they make sure we.
We typically approve things for the FAMER, which is five oh one Cs and things like that, but y'all are private industry, right?
I'm a nonprofit, so this is kind of a fundraiser. This is a, a benefit.
Let me hear my lawyer stand up back and tell me something. One of y'all. Well, this is private industry and we, we didn't let, now I'll tell you this, we did not let the farmers. Put their stuff out there and sell their products. Attorneys.
Yeah.
So where do we stand here?
I, I don't think it's against the law or anything. I think it's y'all's choice.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's up to the.
Well.
I don't think it's a legal question. I think it's.
Okay, so basically, I mean. Back when we go back to when the farmers bunch was wanting to sell their products out there, what was the problem with that?
I don't think, I don't know if there was a legal. Oh. Reasons I'd argue.
Well, it wasn't us, it was y'all.
Farmers people wanted to sign a contract with us. To say that they could have it every Saturday in the parking lot every single week and have kind of like priority over the parking lot. Our action here would basically, I'm thinking, allow somebody to stand at the. At the door coming into the parking lot and say, hey, this is for the event tonight and have a sign and. And, and put people in and park them and stuff like that, which, I mean, they can do it. You charge them for parking?
Correct.
That was, that's. That was my, the next question was where they're gonna charge us? Yeah.
About, what about liability for the county on it? If we. If we don't approve it, what kind of liability do we have and what kind of liability we got if we do approve it?
If you, uh, well, we can, we can do up a little indemnity agreement where it puts everything on them if anything were to happen. Definitely something like that. And if I'm not all liability and. Um, yeah. So.
I think taking the application that we have filed actually saying something along the lines of the liability was gonna be in our position, that the way it's gonna be utilized.
But if we do that, and I'm, I'm kinda more along the line of, of just, uh, six P M. To one A M. There's not gonna be that many people there. And if y'all help people park, there, we don't have a toe in the water. Cause if, if we're gonna do an indemnity agreement with y'all, we're gonna require y'all to bring an insurance policy to us. On file saying that we have a million dollars life, you know, damage insurance and this and that, and that, and that makes it way more complicated than saying, you know what? The parking lot's open. You know, find spots for, you can help them park. Um. I don't think. With it being an open parking spot like that, I don't like the idea of us, um, that having y'all charge for parking.
I see.
Over there. I think it's, we, it has to be a free open parking lot.
And.
Unless we.
Y'all are gonna charge it, what you said.
And the profits are going back, so it's a nonprofit.
Yeah, so I think, I'm kinda like. That we just don't, I think we just don't take any action. We just tell them, hey, it's. I, I would prefer not to approve it. Without some more time ahead of it, cause like, I think we have to do some legal thing. We, like I said, we would have to get you all to. Put a, um, performance.
We're not telling you, you can't use it.
Yeah, it's right there. It's just, we just, I, we just. I don't wanna lock it into y'all and I don't think y'all should be able to, to charge for it for that event, so.
So you have the rights to utilize it and not just charge.
Just like any other citizen, y'all absolutely do. Yes.
You can't, you can't park there either.
Yeah, it's just first come, first served.
So, and I, I wanna chime in. I, I'm a hundred. Humble request to get to you, but, um. I wanna appreciate, thank you, appreciate y'all for coming in at least.
Yeah, at least you bring it to us.
Um. Wouldn't y'all use it? So it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Y'all good?
Of course, y'all's day.
I'm good.
Hey.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
Okay.
Good day.
All right, good luck. So what are we gonna pass on?
We take no action.
No action? Take no action on it?
Yeah. No action on level move thirteen, discuss and take action on the lease between First National Bank of Huntsville and SBU for the lease terms of two years. October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven.
I have an objection on this one.
Thank you, thank you.
Now the D A's.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they done jumped in on you, Jack.
Happy to come. Sit in Will's office with him and share his space. Uh, hopefully this is one of the easiest, uh, like the morning judge, everybody wants to be here. Hopefully this is one of the easiest decisions. This is the lease that comes to you every two years. Uh, to renew a lease with First National Bank. Funding does not. Johnny, it's part of our baseline appropriation. From the legislature in this past year, so.
Right.
But we still.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item thirteen as presented.
But moving second on favor, raise your hand.
You gotta pass this for you.
Thank you. I'll be appreciative. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Fourteen, discuss and take action on emergency purchase of one V H F repeater and one regular purchase of an additional V H F repeater not to exceed twenty thousand from departmental project.
Make a motion to approve agenda fourteen.
I don't see Anthony there if you don't got any questions, but we can, we can answer him if he'll get.
I do have a question. Uh, I do have one question. A repeater not to exceed twenty thousand.
Two.
Is it two or nine thousand and eighty-one dollars?
So.
Because.
There's one at station two that runs the V F Ds, all the fire departments. We're having trouble with it. The one that, that's the emergency. There's also another one at the hospital that needs to be replaced, same age, out of date, way out of date. Uh, while we're doing it, we wanted to replace also.
That's what I didn't understand. We're buying two for the.
Buy two.
Cause the, the paperwork said they're about nine and.
Yes.
Each then.
Yeah, it was two of them.
Yeah, we.
Joe's to buy it.
Yeah, in our meeting, we were just gonna do one. But the board decided to go on since the one at hospital is just as old. To go on and redo it.
Uh, and y'all have it in your budget, don't you?
Yeah. So, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, motion, second. Move, thank you all in favor, raise your hand. Motion. Fifteen, discuss and take action on the purchase of two V H F control stations that are part of a. U S D D automated voice notification project from departmental project funds.
Uh, this is money that. We're not gonna call it orphan monies, but our money that we had from. That time.
Mm-hmm.
That's what. Some of that remaining money is that these automated, like, V H F control stations. That are compatible with, uh, our console. So.
Okay.
That's gonna be my motion.
I'll second it.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries sixteen, discuss and take action on paying accumulated time for. Uh, two, four, seven vacation and eighty-seven sick leave from contingency funds for an employee who is moving to adult probation.
I'm a jailhouse man.
One of our sergeants is leaving, going to probation department. And what I'm told is that we're, we're gonna have to pay her out anyway. To get funding sources. And. What I would like to do is pay it out of contingency so we can go ahead and hire another person. Or fill her spot once she.
Where is Patricia?
I'm here. Uh.
Where did need to come from?
Contingency, if we see later in the year that their budget can't cover it, it would move it from contingency. But he needs to know that that can be done prior to hiring someone.
So at the present moment, he probably can.
He can now, but we don't know how it's gonna end though.
Okay. So right now, we're not gonna do contingency if we don't have to, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Watch very closely. When he needs it, we'll bring it back.
No worries, we're gonna take your money first. If you run short, we'll get back to you.
That's cool.
You already knew that was gonna happen, right?
If you authorize it to, uh, hire the person. Now.
Okay, where you don't have to wait for your.
Yeah.
Roundout.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve it, item sixteen.
So.
Uh, with the, with, with the ability to, to fill that, fill the vacant.
With the ability to hire. Now. How's that, that work?
Motion is second on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seventeen, update on Ivan implementation.
Ivan went into effect. Last Thursday. Really didn't think it would, but it's, uh, it's up and running. Uh, most of the bondsmen are using it.
Each wheel under block of people.
But it seems to be working.
And you may, you know, that link you, you sent all of us.
Yes, sir.
You, I mean, if somebody's interested in how it works, you may wanna get with John, he can send it to you.
And it's, it's very, it's so simple. But I, I would've sworn beforehand, we wouldn't be able to do it, but.
Awesome. Sounds good. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Eighteen, discuss and take action on Oak County debris management. That'll be it. My motion.
The plan that we have to have in place is required by FEMA. For us to receive any kind of, uh, reimbursement for debris that, during a disaster.
I didn't read all, I think, hundred and ten pages of it again. Need anything changed in it?
Not really. It's just a lot of cleanup and.
Hopefully we don't need it.
There, yeah, we don't need it.
Hopefully we don't need it.
If you don't want reimbursement from FEMA, I don't like that's fine to you.
Oh, we may need it. I just hope we don't need it.
Yeah, I got a motion in a second already. My motion, second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nineteen, discuss and take action on purchase of maglock door for the Justice Center with funding from facility project. I got Larry and Jason's online.
Let me get it up.
Jason, I don't. So there, so my, yeah.
The Justice Center. The main entry doors, as far as the public entry over there. Is on a standalone operating system as far as. Banning doors on the sides of back of the building around a central system. Basically, what this is do, this will take. The main door, put it on the same systems. The G program with same, same computer. Move all of, new action. No, sir, just control. Just, just, just a lot of control and, uh. Schedule control.
So it'd be open.
So it'd be open to the public and it'll be just like the other. If it's a holiday or clothes, they're not gonna open for the public.
Yeah.
Where's the money coming from? Larry's projects or what?
Projects. It was unclear whether this.
Nine thousand.
Uh, uh, maintenance and I T. So, just.
Is it total nine thousand eighty-five dollars fifty-eight cents?
Yes.
And we're gonna pull it out of projects.
Yes, project contingency moved to the projects facilities budget.
That's my motion. Second.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Number twenty, discuss and take action on amending policy two point one seven employee identification, security card badge.
Morning.
Morning.
So, for our security. Changed, um, that the attorney. When he purchased the badge. Security, um, over a year ago, we just overlooked in production second other policies, so. The three, four paragraphs that talk about the attorney ID is what was scratched out, so it matches what being in the.
That'll be my motion.
Second.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries twenty-one, discuss and take action on amending policy three point zero six holiday and holiday leave.
That's. I was asked to look at this policy, then we kind of. Evolved it a little bit more since I submitted, um, to court, um. But I was asked to look at paying off, so presently, we do not pay holiday time when employees leave. We were asked to look at that, see how many hours we have on the books, how many employees were at the max that would leave. Um, that would leave it when they left. Um, we roughly nine thousand hours of holiday time on the books. Um, if I remove the grant funded departments. We're down to end, do it with eight years of service. Um, I'm down to thirty-two hundred hours. Um, we presently have thirteen employees that are maxed out. And twenty that are ninety or plus. Um, so we. I'm gonna vote to be able to pitch some of his ideas as well.
Thank you. I, I'm the one actually asked her to take a look at this, um. And I guess I've known since I've been here that we didn't pay holiday when people left, but it was always. It never really came up. Um, and I haven't really thought about it, but, um, it would just odd to me that it's a benefit that we provide to more people. That when they leave. We don't give them any of it. Can we get her to swell that up a little bit back there in the back, make it bigger? So I'm sure.
Shelly.
Expand that thing, keep them going a little bit bigger, just so people can kinda get an idea. Anyway, um. So I started thinking of, um, what, what could we? You know, why, why didn't we pay it? Cause every, every place that I'd been, we play holiday, um, just like we pay vacation, we have a cap on it. We can only let them go so high. Um, even though we're not gonna pay it, we let them accumulate up to one twelve and that's all we let them do. So, um, I asked Amy to run some numbers. And, um, I was really kinda surprised that it's not a huge, um, exposure financially. So. What I would like to, I have two. Things to discuss. One is, uh. Consider modifying the personnel policy to allow payment of holiday pay. To an employee upon termination at a rate of. This is where we kinda changed, actually, just this morning, uh, fifty percent of that time up to the eight years. And then a hundred percent of their holiday pay over eight years. Um, it's a. It's an idea, I think, that, um. Pays rewards of people that hang on to their holiday time, um, that have kept it, the show for work every day. And, and to be honest, people who don't get to take holidays because they work. Either on a, um, either a very, a small office or they're understaffed, so, um. They don't get to take them off, they accumulate them, it goes off here, they go above a hundred and twelve and.
They're getting.
Nothing after that. So that gives them an opportunity to bank up to a hundred and twelve hours of all the holiday time. And if you're here for less than eight years. Um, you get half of it back when you leave. And if you're here for over eight, then you can get all of it. So it's a, a ki- kind of a carrot to accumulate it and keep it. And, um, so that's, that's one of the modifications. And then the second one, I think that is just as important and it, and it can actually help drive the balance down. Is to, um, allow department heads to pay holiday time in addition to the regular pay. On days worked, kind of, um, kind of a pay as you go, like Thanksgiving Day is coming up. We're gonna have jailers working on Thanksgiving Day. We're gonna have sheriff's officers working Thanksgiving Day. Um. We're gonna have EMS working Thanksgiving Day. We may have other people working Thanksgiving Day. Christmas is on a Thursday, so our Christmas holidays, everyone's gonna be working those days. So the idea now is. They'll come in and they work. They're gonna, they're gonna work their eight or twelve hour, excuse me, eight or twelve hours, and they're gonna accumulate that day. So. The, the idea is that they, well, they'll just take that day off later. Well. If you look at the balances in the sheriff and the jail and the EMS and, and excuse me, and some others, and, and, and small offices doesn't seem like a big number. But when you divide it by the number of people in that office, um, it's, it's the same per employee. Anyway, uh. It gives them the chance to say, hey, Bob, you wanna come work on Thursday, Thanksgiving Day? And Bob can say, yeah. And I'd like to get paid my holiday time for that also. It gives them a chance to. Make some extra money, keep the holiday time paid as, kinda pay as you go. And I think most of these can be. I think both of these can be covered. In most departments through vacancies and attrition and people leaving and stuff like that. These, the, um. The amount is. Less than a hundred thousand dollars if everybody quit tomorrow. And we know that's not gonna happen, so it's gonna be spread out. So, um. Before I make a motion, I wanna kinda see what y'all's thoughts were.
Well, let me, let me ask you this, Bill. Uh. You work on the holiday, whoever it is, whether it's Bob or you or me.
Right.
Not us, we elected, but. Are they gonna get paid? Being there.
Right.
So. They also get paid for the holiday time for that same day, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So the legality, y'all have looked into this.
That's generally what most people do.
So it's, it's legal to.
Absolutely. That is what.
So it'll be straight time, not, not overtime, straight time.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the only question.
I would not be, I mean, if they've already worked their four hours. I don't know about the shift work.
Well, like Thanksgiving Day, that's, that's just the fourth day of the week.
Yeah.
So people won't be on overtime that day. And the Friday after, they won't be on overtime that day if they're working the eight hour days. It'll be up to, um. Each department head to figure, you know, to kinda manage that, like, I know the sheriff's office, where do y'all work? Captain. Chief, twelve hour days, twelve hour shifts. So.
Twelve.
Yeah, so they work twelve. So they would just still get, they would, they would work their twelve hour day. And they could only get eight hours of holiday, because that's what they accumulate, that's what they accrue accrue at that period of time. So the, the department head. Will be the one managing that of like, hey. You know, you wanna work this day, you wanna get paid, you want, or you wanna go on the books. It kinda becomes more of a decision between the employee and the department head as to what they want to do with that pay. It, it, I think it, well, I don't, I don't think, I know it, it drives down the balance that you pay when they leave because they.
Well, yeah.
As they go.
And it's gonna drive down overtime in a certain degree too.
Absolutely, yeah. Cause that guy that works Thanksgiving and the day after. He's gonna wanna take that time off in two weeks in a department that's down eight deputies or five jailers. So somebody else has to.
Fill in a spot or whatever.
Come in and cover there. So you're gonna pay it.
Yeah, and for the rest of this year, if you're looking at doing it right now, I mean, most likely their budgets would have.
They would.
Sore it probably.
Absolutely, absolutely. Cause I think it's a great, it's an easy benefit to pass. There's not that much of a cost for us, cause we're gonna, we're gonna pay it.
You're gonna pay in overtime.
You're gonna pay in overtime anyway, so.
I'm good with it, Bill.
All right, so my motion will be.
You got questions about.
I just, Mr. Patricia, how's, uh, two people it's gonna affect is gonna be Patricia and Amy. I wanna hear from both of them.
Yeah.
Patricia.
Um, I think really it's more of, uh. Um, I think really it's more of uh getting the information correctly to Amy's department and reflected on the timesheet. So um, I think that Amy probably would be the best one to figure out. How to get the information reported or two, or because when we audit, we're auditing against the timesheets and what was was entered. So I think it's really. Uh, working out the timesheet, but Amy, your thoughts?
No, that we do the same thing when like Roden Bridge, y'all get to book overtime if you would like. Um, if you want to book it. The the standard policy is we pay you. If you would like something different, then you notate it that way. So we'll just work out. The standard is gonna be you work a holiday, you paid and you're gonna going to get paid for that holiday.
Yeah.
It unless you tell me you would like to do something else with it.
You want to pay.
And then I'll book it.
Okay. Think it's pretty simple.
All right, do you make a motion?
Okay, here's my motion. All right. All right, so my motion is going to be to modify the personnel policy. To allow payment of holiday pay upon termination to an employee at the time of separation. At a rate of fifty percent of you given hours for less than eight years of service. Or a hundred percent for employees with more than eight years of service. You keeping up with that? You good? Okay. And then allow department heads to pay holiday time in addition to regular pay on days worked. And and once again, this is. All right, let me let me clarify that with this one more time. It's, it's not, this, I I think it's very important that we say department heads, because we, we, we can't have an employee say, I'm gonna work, pay me. It has to be a department head to approve it and sign off on it. So if the department said.
Sign the form sheet.
Yeah.
They're approving time.
Yeah. Yes, sir, quick.
So we'll pick on Good Friday and I'll pick on Roden Bridge. We worked our four hours. Good Friday rolls around, we normally get eight hours on the books.
Mm-hmm.
If we put this in place, is that Friday gonna be paid overtime or straight time?
Are you working?
Working.
If you're off.
If you're off, you just book it.
You just book it. Same, it doesn't change unless you work it.
Yeah.
Doesn't change unless you work.
Yeah. Right, okay. Yeah, that's why I said.
That time is work become overtime.
And the only.
If you've already worked for.
Huh?
If you've already worked at forty, if you worked it, it would be overtime.
You would make overtime for regular. I mean, like, you're, we're gonna pay you overtime no matter what.
Yeah.
The holiday time is gonna come in as eight hours, not ten, and it'll come in as a straight.
Only other question I have is. On our sick time, like so many hours of sick time.
Right.
Boy leaves, they get half of that paid.
After eight years.
After eight years, they get half. It's half after eight years. On holiday, we're going to a hundred percent after eight years.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I like, I initially thought about fifty percent, but I'm like, we, we give them this. And we have a super low threshold that we cut it off at. And then after that, it's just, it's just.
Well, then it only affects, it definitely, it only affects if you're terminated. I mean, if you want to burn it, if you retire and you want to burn it, obviously, you have the option to burn it.
And that's, and that's one thing this helps, is that you have a guy with a hundred and fifteen holiday hours. That's what, three weeks basically. So, you know, three months before he leaves, hey, I ain't gonna take a hit of him, I'm taking three weeks off holiday time. You know, so it'll cut back on that too. So you, you'll have somebody here if they want to get paid for it. So. I think it's a good plan, doesn't cost us much. I think it's a, that's a benefit to our employees. All right, let's vote.
I think it's second, yes.
Awesome. Moving second then, all in favor, raise your hand. Oppose, motion passes. Twenty-two, discuss and take action on order twenty twenty-six dash oh seven, amend budget for the fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-five, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Not hearing good back there. Um, okay, the ones that you have for you today are.
Hey, Kelly.
The ones that is moving, uh, a partial move in the Roden Bridge Fund from last year uh to the current year, the, the carryover. It ranges from sixty percent to eighty percent, depending on how many uh outstanding encumbrances there were. And then the movement in uh Roden Bridge Precinct two for the piece of equipment that was uh discussed earlier in Commissioners Court. Uh, the very first.
The next item. It's, it's the next item.
Never.
Not yet.
Do we need to do the next?
He just talked about on his equipment.
Just on the equipment?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, that is moving money should y'all approve.
Happens. If not, we'll move it back.
And I did skip the first one. Uh, Judge Larson requested a ninety dollar reduction in her salary to stay within uh limits, so that. And then the, the last section is the uh carry forward in the projects fund.
One seventy, broken, Jimmy.
Yeah.
That total.
I'm, I'm not. Can you kind of talk with, I don't have my, my little laptop died last.
Okay.
The hundred and seventy thousand in Roden Bridge General. Is that sitting in our, if we wanted to go buy a new widget next week, is that the total amount in that?
It's the total amount that's in there. There may be like twenty thousand more to come forward. But the hundred and seventy includes your current year budget. So the amount that rose forward is a hundred thousand, probably plus a hundred twenty.
Okay.
Uh, there is money in the uh. Uh. Roden Bridge uh Projects Fund, that money was set aside for the uh waystation. There is the uh, the eight eight oh one oh, the hundred and sixty-five thousand is the carry forward from the waystation from prior years. That could be spent for projects if y'all uh chose to. You'd need to leave with thirty-four thousand for the current year expenditures. But that money's been setting and accumulating over a long period. So certainly it would be available for your consideration to allocate someplace else.
And it don't build very fast.
No.
No, but like I say, this is a long.
Remember, remember when it used to?
I do remember.
Yeah. Uh, EMS fund, we received forty-seven thousand two eighty-seven from uh the ambulance support payment program. That money is really to uh aid for uh claims that was not paid on uh on indigence. It generally goes into our revenue funds. Rachel has asked that that money be uh uh added to her medical supply budget. They should. And then the last section is uh the Projects Fund, the one oh five Projects Fund. It's the estimate of the projects that would grow over, and there may be some additions or deductions to that and a few per uh budget amendment.
All right. Move to approve.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Most case.
Thank you, Mr. Patricia.
Point three, purchase, discuss and take action on the renewal of V F I S insurance policy for EMS effective October first, twenty twenty-five.
More mature.
More mature.
It's a little time.
I would transfer that.
Yes, we do. And there was an addition of uh two new amnesties and a Tahoe for this year as well.
So how much did he do with, girl, do you know?
Uh, yes, sir. Last year, uh, I've got it one twenty-six, seven eighty-two, and this year uh. Is one sixteen, is it one sixty-nine? So that's.
Quite a value for.
And I'd add a note that uh EMS Rachel is currently going through that list of equipment. And we think there is one uh ambulance that will come off that was transferred to Roden Bridge that won't be covered under this policy because it's covered under the other. And then uh there is a liability uh policy that's included on that list, so. Uh, we'll be visiting with purchasing to make sure that that's not duplicated coverage that we already have covered through tax. So. But what you're asking to fund is the full amount of, but we do need some additional policy.
Said Roden Bridge, Mr. Patricia, is that the one that went to OEM?
That was the one that went to me. I just asked her, we, we've got it off of this insurance and got it on our normal insurance.
But it's reflected, it, it's reflected in this one sixty-nine. They didn't get a chance to take it off of this one yet.
I get it. Okay.
Okay.
Does that just happen last week? So.
I'll make a motion when we accept the renewal of the V F I S insurance policy.
I'll second that.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion kit. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on purchase and payment of John Deere S six M one oh five cab tractor. From John Deere and Company through Texas Buy Board contract seven oh six dash two three, budget punch from Road Bridge two.
I started this back six or eight months ago, under the old budget, trying to find a tractor. We found quite a few that was junk. And we decided to go with a new one eventually. And it's gonna replace that two thousand dollar tractor that we run for the last ten years from uh federal surplus. So if Miss Cheryl's done all the homework, you need anything else from us, Miss Cheryl, other than a motion to approve. Like a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-five, discuss and take action on nomination to Walker County President, this board of directors, the voting entitlement and resolution twenty twenty-six oh nine. So I'll get that as an email.
Yeah, I listed it and looks like this same two currently continue serving. I don't have an issue with either one of them. I don't know if y'all do or not.
I'm good.
You good with them? Don't you?
I think I stated last year, two hundred and eighty-eight percent, a thousand or two hundred and eighty of shares or a thousand.
Well, school district is the driving force of who winds up on it anyway.
We're gonna split the votes evenly?
I would say split them evenly.
I get that filled out. That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second. Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on HGAC County Representation Designation twenty twenty-six.
And it's you, isn't it, Brandon? You still doing it?
Hmm.
I don't think you need to contend right on.
Brandon and Bill, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I made our motion.
And you keep it the way it was?
Keep it the way it was. That's my motion.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Good enough.
Hey, let's make y'all go right on back up back.
Twenty, twenty-seven, discuss and take action on contract for Walker County G L O Disaster Recovery reallocation program application, D R R P three oh one fourteen fifty. These next two are the ones that we just did for three and four.
A little two million dollar piece.
Right. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Moving second, did all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-eight, discuss and take action on contract for Walker County G L disaster recovery reallocation program application. D R R P three oh one fourteen fifty-one, that'll be my motion. Moving second, did all in favor, raise your hand. She carries. Twenty-nine, discuss and take action on Constable Precinct Three memorandum of agreement, two eighty-seven G task force model grant with no funding bench.
So what is this, Bill? You have any idea what the constable's not in here with?
I talked to Steve the other day, because I had some questions about it. I asked him to be here, um, but I don't know, they must have got tied up. He answered my concerns. I don't know that I'm still not some concerned, but.
Uh, it looks like it's, i- is he assisting?
It is apparently a program, and I don't want, I really don't want to speak for him, because I don't understand all of it either. Um, that has.
Now we got somebody that might help us.
Been in contact with uh Precinct Three about this agreement. It appears that they have already gone ahead and signed the contract with feds. You enter into this agreement. Um, and the grant amount. I've discussed that with Warren, that it is a hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars. I asked for uh additional documentation about that money. Uh, but since the government shut down, I'm not sure if it's been an issue getting into contact with somebody. Um, but he has not provided any additional documentation. He did provide the uh. Signed request to ICE for the money. Uh, uh. I haven't heard that it's been deposited. I haven't gotten any sort of documentation about that additionally, so. He did say that he met the requirements, feels the same funny. Um, but like, we just don't have any real documentation about it, so.
Have any idea what the constable's office is gonna do?
Essentially, it's uh, they have agreed to provide like warrant service for, for ICE uh when they have detainers for people, things like that. So. It was told to me, I talked to uh Constable Hill and Deputy Constable Warren about it. Um, it does not appear that it will take over any significant amount of time for his, from his other job duties as a deputy constable. But Constable, um, Deputy Constable Warren is the one who signed up as the representative for Precinct Three.
I don't, I know.
I think between Hill and Hill, they decided they wanted to enter into this agreement with ICE. It's. It's a statewide thing that lots of different agencies have signed up for. Um, so it's something that any law enforcement agency can agree.
I mean, I don't have a problem with them doing it. I mean, I just want to make sure that they're, that ICE is supervising it. And I think I've read in there that they are.
Hmm.
Under the.
ICE.
Of ICE.
Yes, so ICE is not funding any sort of salary or any sort of monies like that, but ICE would. Direct Warren about if they needed him to do anything, or need him to put any training, they will cover the cost of training, things like that. But um. I believe he's already completed essentially everything that he needed to do training wise for this program.
I was concerned about the money and, you know, nothing's free and what we were gonna be able to.
Yeah, um, and we've not been able to get clarity on that. Uh, so if the court is going to approve it. Uh, or ratify it, or whatever action they need to take. Uh, I think maybe something in their contention up on the money flow uh. Following county treasurer and county purchasing policies. So I want to make sure the money's heading to the county, going through the disbursement account, and that the expenditures are flowing through. Part, part, and all of our purchasing requirements.
And uh Deputy Warren has said that he understands if he were to make expenditures from this money account, he would need to come to Commissioners Court for approval, just as we normally do with expenditures.
Didn't understand that he had to come to Commissioners Court to sign up for a grant, though.
Can we just, can we call?
Let, let's pass on this if somebody can call them and something can come in for the end of court.
I did ask for.
Amy, will you call Mr. Here? Of course, thank you. We're gonna pass on twenty-nine and thirty. Thirty-one, discuss and take action to purchase Warren bodies. For F S A number fourteen zero five six, the Bank for Truck Center of Houston, TIPS contract number two four zero nine zero one, not exceed thirty-one thousand.
Uh, body that will. Have to buy it through Vanguard who we bought from, but uh don't charge a pass through. As the TIPS contract itself is ownership, so my motion's gonna be to approve this.
I'll second it. Your funds?
My funds, yeah.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries thirty. We're gonna skip thirty-two and we're gonna go to thirty-three. Discuss and take action on Buckner request for variance to section B two point one of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding minimum road fundage for their seventeen point four seven acre, seventeen point seven eight acre tract. John Sadler League survey. And.
This is back before us. I hate to bore y'all, but having a discussion with my own kids today and uh, like, over the weekend, and my seventeen year old said that I, I just want to build a house out here on my property. Fourteen year old daughter chimed in and said, that sounds pretty good. I want one too. Way my property's set up, I can't do that. I'm in a same boat as people are. Um, I know that before we had problems and. Andy and I talked about that a lot, and Andy's got all the technical side of it that I want him to go over. I know we fixed a problem in the city policy back when that was changed, but, you know, we're hurting families here. And I'd like to look and figure out how we can help our families.
Yeah, I mean, I have an issue with it too, when you can't help these kids with their mom and dad living on their place or something like that. So.
This is the third one in front of court. We got the coices that have been here, this group here, and the one out on the little road loop that are, that three in the last several months, just to my precinct.
So what, where we need to look at, Andy?
So the item on the agenda. So the high on the agenda specific to this variance, and they're proposing that we're gonna wait and move. Up to thirty-five foot stretch. Two tracks they're trying to create, that's. They're kind of out of room. Better explanation. As far as this, this is the general rule, we like. You go back prior to changes in politics. Four, four years ago. Uh we allow, if it was a family grants exception. Uh about the other criteria for family grants, such as a single track, why did it notable more than four pieces? Um it was an allowance for access, so just if they had an easement in place, they could do the division of the track. As long as it met the conditions of the exception, there was not a frontage requirement for that particular exception. There's another exception that didn't have a frontage requirement, which was uh boundary line adjustment exception. When the policy was redrafted because of. I'll elaborate on, I think the court's probably pretty familiar with some of the issues. Turned into a request for, for, you know, becoming roads, uh addressing, addressing conflicts. Land moving outside the family and then conflicts on access, it's those things. And then the ability to further subdivide that, those tracks, because they have no frontage to begin with. The court shifted toward minimum frontage requirements for, for lots being the exception requirement, similar to what we have for the other exception. So uh what, what I think is being discussed or being brought up for discussion is. The potential of shifting that back to allow access, easement access for the division. In a situation where the family grants exception is otherwise being met. Um so that exception allows no more than four, ties back to the original tract, right? So right now, our grandfather's uh age is two thousand. So any track that was existing prior to two thousand, if someone wants to buy that track and up to four pieces. Would not have to meet the frontage requirement. Just if those go to somebody related within four degrees of consequently their blood marriage, okay? Um if those then come back for re-division. Um depending on how the court wants it drafted, it can be drafted, then it's locked to that original tract. And so any, any, anything beyond four, then it falls back. Think that's it. So we do have three applications, you guys have seen them all, all three, talked to all three groups. This is, um these guys are back with, with, with the question of what's their proposal. But I think fairness. Court is gonna consider changing the policy, given the fact that these guys are sort of right here at the finish line. Uh. Maybe they'd like to know that. Uh but again, what's before court today, specific this teaching variance. And they're gonna have to move systemic systems, or take this one, there are some spray heads around. But they're, I, I, I don't wanna speak for them. Um but I think that this, obviously from previous session. This isn't their ideal, this isn't their ideal, they've come up with a way to do thirty-five foot strips in there. It's not really what they want to do, but it's what that they've been able to put together, so I don't. I think if they were given another option, there's a high likelihood, based on previous conversations with the court, that they would probably seize it. I won't speak for, I won't speak themselves, but. I mischaracterized.
You are correct.
All right, so. Oh, but to get, even if the court were to gonna consider changing policy. It's gonna take a little while to get that back before court, because we have the carrying postings, the whole of carrying. Draft it, get it back before court, so you probably get that out of the window. Day window, anyway, to get it back in front of court. If, if the court even does it, because that would have to be discussed and worked through during a different session than this one.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say this, uh I mean, because we went through the same little ordeal here. Um. Sooner or later, in reality. Y'all's land is gonna go out of your family. And that's when the problem arises, and, and whatever we decide to do. You need to heavily consider that, because uh. Down the road, it'd be a landlocked piece of land, if you know what. You know, or, or something that is not accessible to build on. Um and, and that's why I know they went through a lot of trouble. Getting to this point, but if we had just. Give in the first time. It would, we know it would have been a mess later down the road. What they got, you know, if court decides, may, may actually work, now depending on what, what we discuss next. Um but just somebody rolling in and, and. You know, hey, we got a family tract that we wanna bust up in four, four tracks. Yes, that works fine as long as it's family, but it never stays family. Uh and so just whatever we decide, we need to think it completely through. Uh. Don't be my suggestion.
Yes, and I understand the concerns that Danny's got too, but I hate holding it against the families today. You know, for what happens down the road, I, I don't know, like I said, I, I wish we could help them, and I would love to look at. What we can do with the policy to, to change it where we can help these folks a little bit more than we do.
Yeah, maybe there's a way to find a happy medium, I, I mean, I, I don't know, you know.
So I'd say let's bring something back, let's discuss it in court, and if I was y'all, I would probably. Maybe wait and see where we go with it. So what do you, what do y'all think? Go, you, you on board with?
How, how long, how?
We can wait a little longer.
So if the court wished, they could take action today on the variance for the court. Then they would have the option of pursuing it, but the variance or waiting to see if they're. Or if they, if we pass on.
Then they gotta come back.
In order to move forward with it, you have to come back, present the variance back to you, if you guys decide not to change the rule.
Oh, you need to deal on this today, and then they can hold it and see what we do. They can act on it and not. If they like it, they can act on it, if they don't, they can go back to the new rule.
They, then we do nothing, forcing them to move forward with doing it this way.
Government's slow. I don't want to slow you down anyways.
No guarantees, I mean, there's no guarantees what we're gonna do in the, in the actual policy. So it may help or it may hurt you some more.
So we, but if we approve the variance today. Then we need to call the other people that we turned down the last couple of months, and tell them the same thing, bring it back. So it'll be, it won't without the.
Yeah, and that's true.
But, but this, this variance deals with how we meet our codes right now.
Yeah, what they're asking for is a waiver of essentially, we have a fifty-foot minimum frontage requirement for flag tracks, they're asking for. The frontages that they can provide, which is thirty-five, thirty-five for the two flags in the back, and then the remainder goes with the front track. Right? That's what they're asking for, to, for the exception to be granted. This is not a plat, this will be a family grants exception. But with thirty-five foot frontages and staffs instead of fifty foot frontages. That's which, right now, what they're putting before court is that none of the tracks will be served by easement. They will all be served by staffs that go out to the county road, but they're thirty-five foot wide instead of what's then required in the code is fifty.
Which gets it to where down the road it can be sold and developed.
So um I, I, this picture that's in the backup, this, this hand drawing is probably the best description of what it could do. It shows what their alternate proposals were ever last time they were here, but in order to, you know.
Last page, Shelly.
Pass it.
Thanks. Come on, go on down. Little more.
Yeah, there's.
Come on down.
Two more after that.
Those showing all this back up, but this. Oh, just for the court's information, this tract is already a separate tract, this one to the north. This is a tract that they're looking at dividing, so their, their alter proposal. Come down here, there's a, there's a thirty-foot easement, they'll let fifteen-foot easement lap onto this staff. Run a thirty-five foot staff down to flag two. And on the other side, run a thirty-five foot staff all the way back to flag three, and actually front out to the road.
And nothing says they have to use that staff to build a road, they can use the old existing road.
There's no requirement on where or how they get access from the back. They have an easement, we don't, we don't regulate somebody accessing off of the other easement, that would be. That's fourth, and we're like, we regulate minimum frontage and staff width, we do not regulate how they physically enter and exit the property. Uh other than when they cross into y'all's right-of-way, there's regulations for that.
Scotty, I'm just a little, we'll show you the next one. Right, right there. Yeah, so the, the other track, flag nine, five hundred. They have five because that's limited access at the front, and the flag two, this.
Yeah.
Same way.
And again, this is going back to the code and doing a little interpretation, we don't normally in a plating situation allow more than two flag lots to join. But this is a frontage requirement for an exception, so each of the flags has the fifty foot. Right, they, they just, they, but we're not enforcing the entire subdivision policy, just the frontage requirement subdivision policy. Just, it's, it's in there by reference. Sure, yeah, that would be the proposal on the other side, is a fifty foot, thirty-five foot staff and the.
If we approve this today, can we do a workshop on this next court?
I will do my best, just to work, should get it posted, oh yeah, we can do it, we can probably do it.
Workshops, we can figure out where we all.
Then I get it posted, uh and redrafted.
Okay, so my motion on this item is to approve thirty-three.
So.
I was, one of your questions were, you know, eventually the property could be sold and. Somebody could come in there and put a subdivision, but it's my understanding that. Once we divide it the, the way we're going to divide it, it can't be divided anymore, because we're out of.
No, ma'am, it's just that track.
Right.
So if you built homes on each one of them tracks, you know, then obviously you can borrow money against it. Because you, you have access to accounting. And so that helps on that part. Um but to, no, to go back and, and split them again would be virtually impossible.
Right, so I.
But it's not saying that it won't change out of y'all's hands into somebody else's.
But even if it did change into someone else's hands, they wouldn't be able to split anymore. Because there's not enough frontage there, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, so what we're working with is, I mean, this is all we got, so we came up with. What we can live with, and again, like Andy said, ideally, it's not what we want, but it's. What we can live with, ideally, if we, if we just took. That long piece and split it three ways evenly, we would each have a nice six acre. Piece of land, and right now. You know, the way we're having to split it, we're, we're losing a lot just to that road frontage. You know, to get to the very back to build something.
Sure.
So, anyway. But we appreciate it, and I, I was just questioning, I heard someone say someone could come in later and build subdivision, and I didn't think that could happen. So that won't happen.
No, ma'am.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Thank you.
But it still concerns me that we did, and I'm necessarily gonna vote no on it, if you, and I'm just concerned, we drew, we created a fifty-foot flag lot. And then we had some hardship requests. And we told them forty, forty is as low as we go, that's all you can do is forty, I'm sorry, you can only do forty. And did two or three of them at forty.
Yeah.
And now we're saying.
We're down to thirty-five.
We're down to thirty-five. And um. It's um, so there's got to be some. And I still think we need to contact the other two or three that are out there and see if this changes their world, because it might. To go from fifty to thirty-five is, is a significant reduction.
As I recall, the two that have been here. Dallas, then there was a, a family on Little Road.
Yeah, so we need to look at them, because if we're doing this one, and they can make theirs fit to this, it's gonna be hard to say y'all can't do it.
I, I don't disagree. Uh, uh, our office.
So this one would be. The only, because it's in a family grant on a piece of property that was established, what, prior to the year? Two thousand or something like that, and I think that we need to put a disclaimer in it. Far as um they're reading, I don't know how you would enforce it, but whether it's handshake or something, that this property won't be sold for. I think we did it for like five years or something like that.
There's no such thing as handshake, handshake in government.
I, I don't, I mean, because how would you, you'd almost have to file that against the deed, I mean, I, I don't know how you would, that's, that'd be a. That'd be a grasy question.
And I will.
Stand up, Gracie.
Something I would definitely.
Our side.
Yeah, we're out, homie.
Because you've taken, at the end of the day, you're taking a single piece. Now you're gonna, you're gonna triple its value by cutting it into three pieces. You know, so, so if you do that, I know, I'm just, I'm speaking like, you know, like y'all are not in the room, I don't, you know, stuff like that, but. If I'm a developer and I can say, I'm gonna go to this family and I'm gonna offer them X dollars, I'm gonna get them to cut the property up. And then about the time they step out the front door, I got the contractor in my hand to buy all three pieces of property, and I'm gonna make a fortune off it.
Everybody's not evil, Bill, there are good people.
Well, and that's the reason.
I'm not saying it's evil, I'm saying that's a deal, that was.
The reason for pushing these flagstaffs, whatever width we decide, to make sure that they have access to. To, to public group. You know, I, I, I mean.
This one, I know we, we said forty and now we're at thirty-five. Because we got two sewer systems we're dealing with.
And.
And water wells.
And water well.
I understand that, but everybody got a story.
Yeah.
So I'm um. I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I, I guess we'll do it, I think, I, I think it's the wrong move, because we're. We're, we're creating something that's, other people are gonna model after now, they're gonna come back and this is what they're gonna say, hey, y'all did it on October the twentieth. So how come you can't do it today, so?
Can I just say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I have more of a passion for this land, and I appreciate y'all's, you know, being up there and doing this. But I mean. Like Dorothy says, when we cut this this time, this is it for us, guys. You know, we can get no more, you can't get blood out of a turnip. So we're here fighting for our little thirty-five piece of flag post, because I don't, honestly, to God, I work in the corporate world every day. I don't base one, I can't make one size shoe fit all of y'all, I could bring each one of you a size nine shoe and say. Guys, let's put this on and let's go jog, it's not gonna work. We can only bring you what works for us, I can't help the other people, I've looked at some of those cases, I've listened to y'all's court. I know y'all've granted forty foot, and I get that compassion for everyone, and I wish I could give you more. I can't, I have water wells and everything else to contend with. I'm looking out for my family, my heirs, I don't care, I'm not selling this land to anyone in ten years. Until I die, I mean, I might die tomorrow, I don't really know, I don't have that magical ball. I don't know if I ever have to sell it or never will sell it, my son's been out there fourteen years with his two children that got a new Waverly school. I'm fighting for them, I'm fighting for my heirs. This is me, my land that my people have given me. I have passion for it, and I would appreciate anything y'all can do, and I get that. People before us, I've looked at their cases, hundreds of acres, I have seventeen pieces that are just like on a skinny margarita. I mean. This is what I have to work with, and I just ask for y'all's. You know, blessings to do thirty-five foot, and I understand this causes hardship for other cases. That maybe you've had more land or less land than I have to deal with, but that's all I can do is ask for y'all. To help us, to help our families to maximize the most use out of our land that we can get, thank you.
Thank you, uh what, what we have to do is exactly the opposite of what you said to start off with, we have to make one size fit all. Everything has to be equal, no matter who comes through the door, and they open our development book up, it has to be from the. The one acre tract to the five hundred acre tract. Anything outside of that. People come in and request, and I'm a, and I'm the, I'm the anti-variance guy for the most part, I just am, because an option to this is not to cut it up. That's an option, so there is two options, one is to leave it like it is, and one is to cut it up and you need help cutting it up. Problem we have, and this is, this is obviously gonna pass up here, but I wanna get the message out that we had just approved a thirty-five foot staff. That's what we've just done, we have approved it, and anybody else coming in for one. It's gonna be hard to tell them no, because everybody got a story, so that's um. We do our best. Yeah, we do our, we do our best to put, you know, to get a, make a good policy for, for good development. And uh but I agree with Danny, at some point, you know, this is gonna be sold, at some point it will, you know, it may. Fifty years from now, but somebody else will own it, and then I hope by that time we don't have a whole bunch of other thirty-five foot staffs, so I will. Close my comments.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. Order one of motion passes. Thirty-four, discuss and take action on modification of requirements variance previously granted to J and H Navasota Development on six three twenty-four. Regarding points of access and sections A one point one W C S R regarding flat requirements for thirty-two point eight three zero five. Acre parcels on thirteen seventy-five, new owners of twelve point eight acre portion of the track, Topstar Construction LLC. Is seeking modifications to requirements given to. Top Star Construction LLC is seeking modifications to requirements given to prior owner in order to move forward with their development.
Yeah, I love.
Yep, this is part of the.
Tell them your name and introduce yourself. So this is before Commissioner Ford. Previous variance was granted. Without flat. Changing upon several contingencies to which one of the three tries. Plotted that see permits from text top both tracks. Received permits from text top prior to use development permits. Been back for four or even quite a bit of discussion that they're bringing it back with some additional ideas. So same exact labor. One of Judge Commissioners, um, I guess what we're trying to do is there's.
Real fast.
I'm Jeremy, do it with Top Star Construction. This is Joe Mendiola. He's my partner.
I'll fuck with you.
Um, what we're trying to do is the variance that's up front, I think, is our biggest holdup about. Whether the adjacent property is gonna get their text out approval for their driveway. So that's their access if they doesn't. They don't get it is what I'm understanding. So what we're wanting to do is go ahead and plat it.
That that I don't think that statement's. Quite right because the access we're talking about was a dual access at uh, that. Access point driveway for the subdivision and for you guys is how the original text dot one was, correct?
Yeah, that's exactly what.
Yeah, and then we, the water plant has theirs that's there.
The water plant was separate from the y'all's track and the Waverly Place track.
That's, oh, yeah, right, correct, but the the water plant entrance is in our, in our. Property right now. It's like that comes around that entrance. We filed, we got a permit for that under us. It's under Top Star. That driveway permit is under us.
Shared one with the water plant.
Correct, so that is our access.
The original was the two tracks with shared access.
Yes, sir.
Just make sure that went clear.
So and so I guess what I'm trying to say is we want to go back to just go ahead and plat it with the easement in it. That way. If they need through, whatever needs to be done, it's it's done. It's like it says in the variance there is the way I understand it.
So I'll I'll add a couple of things.
Yeah.
Because I've already discussed this, uh, I think with uh, Jerry. There's a, they they filed a. An easement across the perimeter track. Survey.
Yeah.
Uh, in order potentially to provide uh, through access to. The adjoining year, which you guys know is Waverly Place section two, okay? Um.
That's correct.
The the. To my knowledge.
Two or three.
It's two.
Two.
Because they're they're building them sort of out of where it's. Okay, so uh, to my knowledge, the current permit that's been granted to Top Star. And the well provider, the water provider. That permit was granted based on Top Star and the water provider's use. But does not include additional traffic coming from either the subdivision or Waverly Place section two. When that permit was applied for, that traffic counts were not put into that permit as far as I know. So i- if they begin to use it to access, now they put an easement in. But if if in the route additional traffic out through that entrance across the sixty foot. A plating that road so that it can be publicly maintained and adopted. That becomes a challenge because you're coming across private easement. Um, and second, uh, I don't know that the permit, the text on his issue. Would include that traffic flow. That permit would probably have to be modified before it can bring additional traffic.
But wow, the understanding, the original text up. Permit that it was talked about between you guys and Waverly Place. Now that y'all have applied and got and have access through the water plant entryway, that was not avoided. Way I understand it.
Yeah, there was originally, the discussion was an access point to come in to the Waverly Place section two. And then there to be access granted to Top Star off of that that road, that access. But that that plan changed at some point. So now Top Star applied for its own access permit to share the water. And that other one is, to my knowledge, never been issued in the, and the application has not been updated.
And the fear that.
Be wrong. They may have information they won't have.
That's the fear that comes up is is the section two of Waverly Place. We've asked them to connect Jim Hall line out. So that's the the second entrance to. Waverly Place and that's what we want is court for safety and all the things that go along with it. So. That's the only thing that I see that's really holding us back, but we gotta get these guys off our center. As well. I mean, Waverly Place is not applied for that out for that deal. They're not ready with their, all their different requirements. Uh, water studies, traffic impact analysis, all that. But these are two separate lots now.
They ever give you update from that text about meeting they're going to the week they're over here? I mean, we thought that permit was getting approved that week.
We don't have anything from text. The 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 guarantees or even comes close to saying if. They wanted to have that permit separately, they would grant it. It's. My understanding is until they get a modified application for the other access point, text dots not going. Put anything in writing in the response.
Yeah, and and the tone of our meeting.
His problem is he can't, he can't control that.
Yeah, they could be two, five years. I don't know how long it's gonna be before they get that. We're sitting here with. That's the only thing that we could figure that would satisfy is go ahead and leave the.
Quest today is to just. Approve this driveway variance that we're looking at right in here.
Essentially asking for modification of the original variant so that he could plot s- s- a singular plot of his lot. Not showing the rest, right? Their other part would be. Be left to Waverly Place owner to plot at the point that they get there. He just wants to do a single lot plot of his to meet the plot requirement instead of it all being plotted. He just wants his part to be plotted. And he's willing to go forward with the plot for his his lot.
So we're.
And also allow not both to have a text dot permit before we issue development permits. But as long as his has a text dot permit, I can issue permits for development on his lot. And then leave the other one sort of, you know, when they get ready to move forward, they would be on their own. Which may mean they don't get that access. I don't know.
I mean, you see any reason why they wouldn't get access there?
I don't. I was fixing to make a, make a, uh, make this comment to to these uh, Joe and Jeremy here. If we allow this today, y'all have to stick with the water plant entrance. Okay, the only other entrance y'all could possibly get is if y'all made a deal with Waverly Place and got a. You know, they built that entrance and y'all come off of it somehow, however y'all wanna make that work. I don't, we don't wanna see as court, you get this deal today and say, okay, now I'm gonna put an entrance in here. And then we get entrances too close and then Waverly Place doesn't get the second entrance because our main concern is that second entrance for Waverly Place.
Right.
Right, that's the, that's the subdivision that it's got one end and I've already been out there on a tree across the road and everybody was blocked and. Analysts trying to get in. We we need that second entrance, you know, so y'all can't do anything that jeopardizes. The, for all of text dot codes and standards and links and all of that, there's enough room there.
At our meeting last week. They, unless I read it wrong, they were not very excited about the second driveway permit. They were like, they were told when this came in. This driveway right here that this that they're granting was gonna be big enough to handle the second entrance and.
And those guys.
That's what they, that's, that's what text out accepted that permit and granted that permit under that premise. And then they're like, okay. Now you're coming back saying that you don't want the driveway that you told us that you that you didn't. Now you want the driveway that you told us you didn't need and we approved that one. So there is a hill to climb with.
But that driveway was all that during hassle times.
It might be, but I was there last week and they were not thrilled with it. They were not, they were not excited about.
They weren't thrilled with it, but they've already, they also issued them a permit to use the water plant.
Yeah.
So if they weren't thrilled with the original, why why did they issue that?
They issued this one because they were told it's the only driveway that they thought they were gonna have to permit across that whole front. That's what they said. That we thought this was supposed to be the driveway for that. And if y'all need to build a a second one, that's when they were saying we're gonna have to have a whole bunch of stuff to make us see why it's. Why it has to happen. I'm not saying it can't happen. I'm just saying that what I heard, it wasn't like, we just bring this application and we'll sign it and give it back. That's, that's, that's not what I saw.
The reason the original variants included the stipulations was essentially the court's idea at the time was there was a sale that needed to take place. Um, before all that could be accomplished, but they wanted to make sure. That that second entrance happened, so they tied the two properties together in the conditions. Instead, you both move forward together or neither one of you move forward together.
Yeah.
And that keeps both, that the idea was to keep both owners. Presumably, who knew when they purchased that this condition was there, that both owners would then work together to get an access, a single access point. That they both could use, uh, the text I would approve accesses for both of them. So they were both sort of locked together to make that happen. If if the court, um, I'm not saying the what the court should do, but if the court were to grant the the variants as applied for today. It would essentially unlock him from that and there would be two standalones and whether they get that other instance or not would be up to the mercy of text. And we don't, as Bill stated, I don't think we have any strong indication of text out that they are moving towards granting that. It would just be. They would have to review it and decide.
So if they do this. And. Waverly Place. Puts her application in in text. That's like, no, you don't get it. Now what happens?
Yeah, then you're stuck with one.
Stuck with one. And uh. I mean, it's y'all, it's your world down yonder. I think you're putting a lot of hope in text by giving them a second entrance. Um, if we're gonna demand them to have a second entrance, they're gonna have to come to this driveway. And if you don't make them hit the second entrance, then what are you gonna tell the next guy that that we tell?
Text out said that they would not allow.
To come to this one?
To come to the water plant entrance.
Okay.
They have now.
Okay.
Text out said that 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 was out. It's not big enough. It's not designed big enough. It's all that.
So we've held up subdivision, it's a couple of new Waverly. Because they didn't have a second entrance. We told, we don't turn over the first shovel of dirt until you have a second entrance. And um, here we are. Again.
The problem, the.
We're in a test spot. They're in a real test.
I understand.
The problem for for Top Star, I mean, I think you get this is and text out is not gonna, as far as I can tell and you 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 heard him speak. They're not going to issue any sort of a written response. Even even hinting at their guarantee of these until they receive an updated application.
Right.
And they have not received an updated application on the on the other entrance.
Yeah, and Waverly Place has to do it because they own the land.
Right.
Yeah, correct. So worth their mercy for however long they decide to hold that up and.
I mean, it's two separate, two separate deals and you're not beholding to Waverly Place. I mean, y'all are, y'all are doing.
And we have an entrance already, you know, under, so it's kind of.
Because the biggest holdup for him is he's got the entrance from text out. I am, I'm stuck with that variance that says I can't issue him development permits until he gets. In compliance with the conditions of the variance, one of which is that both properties have text on access, not just his.
But I've called the developer. I've called the engineer. I've had meetings with the engineer.
I can't get them off center. By by both properties. You mean the Waverly second.
Place, the the condition that was set is that both properties would have, uh, the envision at the time was they would have the same exit. But it said they would both have permits for text on access.
So where where are they in construction out there? I mean, they're planted on that next section, right? And doing construction.
They're not doing construction on section three at this point. They're doing, I mean, two at this point. They're doing construction on section three. So their development's very bad. One, three, two.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't know when this section will come forward for full development.
Well, it may just be that we grant this and then when they come in looking for section.
What I'm getting to.
When come to section two, you don't get to do section two until you do a second entrance.
That's that's where I'm going.
I'm with you on that.
Uh, I'm I'm all over that.
There's other land to buy to make it happen too.
And and that ain't something that we're requesting right now that we just go up with. That's been in the conversation ever since.
And I do hate it for y'all, but I mean, if we don't get a second entrance into the subdivision, it's it's gonna be bad.
Yeah.
So uh. Uh, if we can do something like it, I'm I'm good.
No, I I I, you know, for the court's information. That variance that was put in place and the conditions that were put in place on that variance. Um, sort of again lock those two together so that just like. So he's relying upon this. There may be somebody else out there who's saying. Get it, but I get the, I like the other, I don't know.
Well, we can't owe these, I just, in my heart, we can't owe these guys up any longer. We went went through the wringer for. Six months now.
Properties to make this all work, you know, for six months before we ever bought it because this was supposed to be the whole reason that we had to slide it.
That you call Waverly Place and kind of tell them that we're gonna be, we're buying section two. I'm gay.
All right, Andy, how do I need to work this because? Just there's several moving parts here. I want to get the wording correctly. I don't want to make a motion to turn these guys loose.
I mean, that's my question is.
Has this listed here?
So they're asking essentially for to be able to plaid their lot on its own. And to be able to provide text out permit for their portion. That that suffice, that that's the that the condition be amended to allow for that.
Okay, so when we go back in there, when y'all get this ready to bring to Andy, that sixty foot easement that we had penciled in there. To be removed, just get it off there. Don't tie that to your stuff. Plaid it, bring it forward to Andy. You'll have the. After we approve this today.
Plaid will still come back before Commissioner Ford.
Right.
It'll be a one lot plot.
But that one lot plot, the little easement, the sixty foot we tried to put in there and when text I said, no, you're not taking all that. Traffic threw that up. Wait, just get rid of that, you know, and.
That's right.
So, let him to approve thirty four.
I'll second it.
Move them second round, pay raise your hand. Thirty five, discuss and take action on Barbara and the Billberry. Request for variance to section point nine of Milwaukee County subdivision regulations. Regarding requirements to survey entire parent tract to create a proposed two and a half acre tract out of sixty four point five four two acres.
Yeah, this is similar to the ranch request you guys had a couple of weeks ago. It's got a fairly small track come over a very large track. They just want to be able to show the small track in the plot and show the rest of the acreages. Going as a remainder and leaving this raw acreage.
All right, I make the most approved agenda thirty five as presented.
Moving in seventy dollar, favorite raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty six, discuss and take action on Nick the Silva. Manningwood Solar LLC request for variance on site civil facility.
So they're requesting they want to put an office out there. Instruction, um, they're asking to place. The office with a, but they, um, holding tank. And that that requires a variance under our rules. You guys have branded similar variances for developers in the past.
Yeah, can we put a timeframe on this basically? So when construction over. Have to come back to us.
Yes, sir.
What time period would you propose?
I would say by December next year, just one year.
One year from today.
One year.
Think the last one we did, uh, you had to provide.
Yeah.
Information to Andy's office.
Okay.
Receipts of of when you pumped the.
Oh, sure.
Like.
Yeah.
From turn Monday and so.
Probably make it to twelve thirty one twenty six.
It'll work.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Thirty six.
Twenty six. Twelve thirty one twenty six.
It expires on that day.
I do.
Luden sang it on favorite raise your hand.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any luck with Mr. Hill?
They have very little information because of the government shutdown. They're still trying to get some more, but they will. Hopefully put it back or put it back on course for next time and hopefully have.
Okay, that's fine. I'd rather pass on it so they can tell me what they're doing.
All right, we'll go into number thirty two, discuss and take action on pending civil litigation matters below. We'll go into executive session at ten twenty five. Everybody will leave the room.
Hey Carrie, what did you have put down for 29 and 30 that we passed or we were coming back?
That one, right?
So.
I'll have to.
I put pass at this time.
Okay, perfect.
Let me get my.
We're on to get back to it.
Okay.
All right, time is 10:54. We're back from session will resume number 32.
Doesn't make the motion to authorize the district attorney's office to intrude into into a settlement agreement for cause number 2531898.
So I can sign it. Hold on.
For.
I need to sign.
District Attorney and the county judge to sign.
Second. Motion in second on the paper. Raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Motion carries. No more of your session. Any public comments? Questions for media? The missions court. All right, we'll adjourn at 10:55.
And if you say you got things to sign or not, I don't guess.
Yes.
Well, they don't have nothing. I can go.
I think all those are me. The parents is.
I'll make you know.